Good evening. Today, what are we, today, May 14? This is a special, in some ways, school committee. This is where we reorganize. So I open, and I'm going to open by asking for a nomination of a chair.
I nominate Dawn.
I accept.
I agree. The nomination by Danielle Hart, and seconded by Greg Vines, and accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Danielle.
Sorry, aye.
Aye.
Chair. Okay. So, we have a new chair. Madam Chair, take your job back. It's yours now.
Madam Chair, I just want to, and you and I talked about this briefly earlier. What I'd like to do is do the reorganization now, as is required for us to do, and then take another formal vote, once the other two school committee seats have been filled, to give them the opportunity to vote as well.
I agree.
So do I.
Does that need to be a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I would make that motion.
I second.
Making a motion that tonight's reorganization remain in place until the two new school committee members have been appointed, and then another vote will be taken, another reorganization vote will be taken at that time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I take nominations for a vice chair.
I nominate Greg.
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you, I'll do it.
He accepts, all those in favor, is Greg Vine as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And now we have citizens' questions and comments. I'd like to call Mr. Barbaro up.
Oh, this is weird. As you know, of the recent election, I was elected to the Board of Selectmen. I submitted a letter of resignation the day afterwards. I ask you to accept it this evening. I've spent 11 years on that side of the table. It's been a great ride. I worked with a lot of great people through that time, and my heart's always been with the school department. And the people here have done such an amazing job in the last 11 years, I see, and I wish them all the best. So I ask you to accept my resignation dated on May 5th.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion, first of all, let me say thank you for your service to the schools and the town, and it's certainly appreciated by everybody in the community. And I would make a motion that we accept Mr. Barbaro's resignation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Barbaro, for all your services.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens', questions, comments? Is there any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have a correspondence and announcement at the same time. We have a letter from Mrs. Cynthia Landano. Mrs. Cynthia Landano was our Director of Special Education, and she has accepted the position somewhere else, and let me read the letter. Dated May 13, 2015, Dear Superintendent Kelfawi, please accept this letter as notification of my resignation from the position of Director of Special Education for the Winchendon Public Schools. It is with mixed emotion that I inform you of my intent to take a new position as the Executive Director for CAPS Collaborative. While I was not looking for the new employment, this opportunity has presented itself, and I find that it is just the right fit to further my career. I have thoroughly enjoyed my many years of employment with the Winchendon Public Schools and the various roles I have been able to serve in. I will always be proud of the wonderful work we have accomplished over those years. It has been a pleasure and true honor to work with the many employees who are not only my colleagues, but my friends. Please know that I will assist the district with transitioning to a new Special Education Director in any way that I can. I plan on working until July 24, 2015, with July 17, 2015 being my last physical day in the district. I will do everything in my power to leave my department in good order to help ease the transitioning to a new director. In the success in her new career, I know they're very excited to have her, just for the record for people who don't know what CAPS is, is a collaborative in the area, and Winchendon is a part of the collaborative, so we are represented there. And I was there in their meeting two days ago, and they're all extremely excited. They know Cindy, they've worked with her for years, and the advisory boards of two collaboratives, not just CAPS, but FLAC as well. So Cindy, we wish you all the best, and you will be missed. Good luck. And on that note, we will, an announcement is, we have, I instructed the staff to start working on a job description, and we will be posting it soon as possible on the various boards, particularly those where we are members of, so we don't have to incur any cost. And I just want to bring to your attention that this is one of the positions that the school committee has to be much more involved. This is not a regular position. This is a position of Director of Speds, Business Manager, Superintendent, of course, have to all be approved by a school committee, and we're going to be asking you to get involved a lot more. I am recommending that, and it's your decision, my recommendation is we follow the traditional two-step process where we will have a search committee that includes the principals and teachers, of course, various constituents, various, from our stakeholders, various parties, and then they will be instructed to present three to five candidates to the school committee, with the recommendation of the superintendent for the school committee's consideration. And I recommend at that point that the school committee conduct final interviews with them, which will, as you know, will have to be public, and then you make that final decision. So, I don't know if anybody would like to entertain a motion to allow us to do that process, two-step process?
I'd make that motion.
Can I second for discussion? How would interested parties let or express their interest in serving on the search committee?
We will probably be announcing it immediately, at the very latest on Monday, if not tomorrow. Pretty much send an email, post it on our website, and, you know, maybe talk to the courier to also put it in.
An email to you?
Oh, to let me, yes, they can, that would be the proper one.
Thank you.
All those in favor of starting the search committee?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And Cindy, thank you for all your service. I know that you were there when I was on the committee last time, so you've been there for a while. Thanks for all that you've done, for the town and for the kids.
We wish you all the best in moving forward. Okay. Is there anything else?
Yeah, one more is, you'd have to consider is for CAPS and also for FLAC, that between now and June 30, I guess, the next few meetings you'd have to consider, I probably would have to wait until the two members are in, so you can share the word, and you would have to appoint a representative to FLAC and a representative to CAPS. The state will only allow that it be either the superintendent or one of the school committee members. And the both calendars for both, for the meetings, they have to by low hold six meetings, a minimum of six meetings a year, and both calendars have been voted on yesterday and the day before for each one, and we'll send them to you as well, so if any one of you has any interest, then they know what they're committing for, time-wise.
Okay, I'll make sure that's put on the agenda for first one with our new members.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, and we do have a student this, tonight, for the Murdoch Middle School.
Megan Tavares has been chosen as the May 2015 Student of the Month for Murdoch Middle School. Her sixth grade team has described Megan as follows. "We are nominating Megan because of her academic achievement, as well as her outstanding attitude. Academically, she's doing a fine job in all of her subjects. She has worked at a hot, very high level since the start of the school year. She's prepared for class and takes initiative to seek help when she needs it. Megan's positive attitude comes through in the fact that she is polite and respectful to everyone, and she works well with whoever she is partnered with. These are some of the reasons that we are happy to nominate Megan for Student of the Month. The administration, faculty, and staff are very proud of you, Megan, as a role model and example to be emulated by others. Again, thank you, and keep up the good work."
Good job.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the superintendent report?
Yes, I was going to report to you on the, we had on Tuesday a meeting with the DOR and the town folks. It was a very good meeting, it was an excellent meeting. I think probably was one of the best collaboration I've seen in many, many, many months. And we talked about the same things we talked about here with this slide, and I had prepared some recommendations to you based on the discussion we had with them, particularly the DOR then, with respect to the articles. Some of them, they repeated, some of them, they kind of gave a slightly different discussion and interpretation, but I do want to go ahead with the recommendation anyway. At the discussion that, during the meeting, and with input from the town accountant and about what's available and what's not available in funding, they had asked us to consider, and we agreed that was a good idea to do that, to pass over Article II and Article III of, no, I'm sorry, those were not our articles. Our articles are, well, they said that too, but that's for the town. Our articles for the special town meetings are Article V and VI, and they had asked them to pass them over. So I'm here recommending to the school committee to, since we, I don't think we have a vote, a meeting scheduled for that day earlier before, we did not post it, so this was your last chance to do that, except on the floor directly, to take a vote to hopefully support the motion that both Article V and VI be passed over of the special town meeting.
Okay, so you need a motion?
I need a motion, and I need your approval.
I would make a motion that the school committee recommend that we pass over Articles V and VI of the special town meeting scheduled for Monday.
Second. Any discussion? What does that do to our budget?
For FY '16, it doesn't mean anything. These are FY '15 budget items. These are two items that the DOR had, was aware, as he mentioned, this is items that we, they knew about way back then, when they were doing their calculation for the total authorization of 6 million. They knew about it, they knew all along. These are costs that are completely unanticipated when it comes to sped and so forth, and they know that, and they were telling us at the time, if you recall, that as you're building and you're working with FY '15 particularly, you need to pay very close attention that you don't run into any red, except for the things that you have absolutely no control over, and these two are one of those two items, and they specifically talked about that. At the time, we were looking, the intent was to give an option to the town to consider funding them from some other sources, because that's normal procedure in all 351 communities. Whenever you have overage and sped, you have to go to the town and do that. Given the special circumstances happening in Winchendon, and the, it was agreed that the town isn't going to have any money anyway, so it's just a waste of time, and the discussion around these are just going to be divisive, let's just move all together, and let's start working together, as opposed to trying to be divisive.
And so just for clarification, so everybody's on the same page, the funding for these deficits, I assume, will come from where?
Whatever the final number is, I must also bring to your attention, these are only estimates, because the second one is estimates we got from the town, and obviously, they're going to come up with a final estimate and define the accurate number. The first one is a very fluid number, because we have two more months of schools and special education kids move in and out. I understand from our special ed director that this number has already gone down a little bit, because a couple of our students have already moved out, and we're no longer responsible for their bills. So whatever the final number is going to be for both, the DOR has always planned, since the beginning of discussion of deficit legislation, that it will be funded from the second part that he was referring to.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear where it's coming from. Is it going to be deficit funding? I didn't hear where.
Right, that's what Mr. Shand, that's what he was counting as part of when he was saying in 2015, we have, the deficit might be up to $1 million, and these were always counted in it for a total of 200, whatever the rest is the town.
I understood that it's coming out of more deficit, we're borrowing more money.
That's right.
Could you also speak into the microphone?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to pass over Article V and VI, and it has been seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
All right. I will notify the town moderator, or you, Madam Chair, will notify the town moderator at the beginning. Furthermore, in the discussion, as I had pointed out earlier, when we were talking with the DOR folks, that the, I think there was a discussion between the Board of Selectmen and Board of School Committee, that in selecting one of the two budget articles and not really go with both, and it was, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, decided that the town would, the both boards would suggest to pass over Article 11, which is the one presented by the school committee, and adopt Article 12, the one submitted by the town manager. Just for explanation, the two are exactly the same, it's a language issue, at the bottom of it is the exact same number.
All right, you need a motion for that too, I would assume?
Yes.
I will make the motion then, that the school committee recommend to the annual town meeting that it pass over Article 11. Hey, I'm going to leave it there, pass over Article 11.
Second.
Any discussion? I think, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, we will have to communicate that to the town moderator, and the final one was the Article 15 over.
I'm sorry, could we back up to 12 for a minute? Should, do we need to make a motion, or should we make a motion that action on Article 12 will be dependent on the conversation with Mr. Sullivan, that hopefully happens tomorrow?
I thought that would be affecting mostly 15, the one coming up, that I was going to talk about.
Okay, I could be mistaken.
Well, doesn't it change the indirect cost? Well, that's a figure that changes on that night anyways, isn't it, the exact?
Well, depending on what you do on 15, depending on what you do on 15. Let me just explain 15, and maybe you can go back to 12, and we can go back to explain. As, for those of you who followed the discussion that took place, Mr. Barbaro correctly reminded us, I had forgotten myself, that the override that we got last year, last year, the entire override we got was applied directly to pay for the overage of indirect cost, all of it. This year, the override was going to be applied direct, all of it, to fund the preschool. So, the preschool initially was more than 300. If you recall, during the budget cuts, we had presented some cuts that were within the preschool to bring it in line with $300,000. In this way, we're allowed to do that, because preschool is not allowed to be funded from net school spending. At least, that's what has been explained to us several times by the DSE, Department of Education. Now, we have this new information from the DOR saying that, well, before that, I think the discussion, we were saying, like, it doesn't really matter, the 207,000, if we had, I had anticipated that the town might not have the money to pay for it, so we had built it in to our estimate of indirect costs. Now, with this new, this information that we have, that they're saying that the 207,000 will not be accepted as part of net school spending, it becomes a big issue of allocation of funds, how do you allocate the spending? Initially, we were going to come to you and recommend that we just pass it over, and just let's start new, and we'll figure it out, we'll work together with the town, and whatever we can help each other, we'll help each other. But now, in light of this, I don't know what we want to do with this one, other than I'm going to have to call the Department of Education tomorrow, get understanding from them, clear understanding, whether they will or will not, will they make special considerations, special circumstance, given that this is a rare case, that the town is in this case, and depending on that, I will inform you on the floor of town meeting, and then you can take whatever action at that time. If the, and the action would be that if the DOR, the DSE, the Department of Education, says that this amount cannot be part of net school spending, cannot be an indirect cost, then we would have to do some juggling in there, some serious juggling. Either we would have to cut the preschool completely, which I do not recommend at this time, or we would have to just let it be. And if you do just let it be, and have the school pay for it, you can pass over this article and just tell the schools to pay for it, and the Department of Education says we will not recognize that expense as a legitimate expense toward net school spending, it's not really such a big deal, it's just that on the books, the town will show that they have not funded the schools by 207, they're in shortage. It's not really a big deal, if you recall, up to last year, we were in a shortage of 395,000. From your information, neither the town nor the school are going to take any action, I'm sure, especially with the spirit now of working together, as long as the amount of shortage never goes to 5% or higher. As long as it is 5% or below, the state will allow you to ride with that number.
So if we were to pass over Article 15, how would that change Article 12?
It doesn't change it at all at this point. If we pass over Article 15, Article 12 is what we think the indirect costs are. At the end of the year, when we file with the Department of Education, they will have one of two answers for us. If they allow them to be part of, under special circumstance or special consideration, they allow the town to classify it as indirect cost, then nothing really happens. If they don't allow it, it will show on the books as a shortage of, that the town has a shortage of net school spending of 207, as long as it doesn't reach 5%, there is really no action to be taken by the state, or the town, or anybody. Up to last year, if you recall, from 2012, 13, and 14, the town was consistently, in all three years, underspending the schools, and it accumulated to 395. We didn't take any action, the town didn't take any action, the state didn't take any action, because it was still under 5%.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but I'm wondering if it would be worth holding on this discussion for a minute, to let me run upstairs to see if Linda is still here, and see if she could post a meeting for the school committee for Monday, so that we had, so that you can get the information from Department of Education that we might be able to vote.
That would work, yeah.
Let me go see if she's up there.
The clerk has to do it downstairs, and it's still late.
Oh, the town, that's right.
And then you can't do it.
Okay, Linda can't do it? All right.
Well, I think it's a short discussion, will provide you with the information ahead of time via email as it comes to us, and then when you come to the town floor or town meeting, it's a very quick decision, whether you pass it over or not.
All right.
It's just a quick decision.
Just that we have to do it in front of all the town.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so we'll wait on further information on that one?
Yes. That's it, Madam Chair.
And is there a business office report?
There is. I just want to start out by saying that I know we're going to contact Jay Sullivan about this issue, and I just want to bring to everyone's attention that he is right now at the Masbo Conference in Brewster, so if we don't get him tomorrow, nobody panic, I'm sure we can probably get an answer on Monday, but just be aware of that. So the documents you have in front of you, I have a couple items I wanted to discuss. Number one were the monthly results, and for new members, just so you know, monthly, we provide the results of operations by DESI function code. So what you have in front of you with the Munis report from the town of Winchendon are the expenditures as of today, and you can see the current balance on the reverse of your page is of a budget of $13,176,674. There is still $3,459,280 to be expended, or 73% of the budget has been expended. And each of the line items in there is by DESI function code, so it's basically the codes that we would use to report to the Department of Education. In addition to that, and under that, is also a report that we do, that we provide to the DOR in our monthly meeting, and it's organized by UMS code, which is basically the Universal Massachusetts Accounting Structure Codes, it's used by municipalities. It's the same information, but it's basically a different cut at it. The one thing that is different, though, is we do a projection to DOR to show where we expect to be at the end of the year, based on our best estimates. So as of today, if you look at the bottom line, which is page three, once you look at the results of operations, the projections, and adding in the expected revenues received by Circuit Breaker and School Choice, we're projecting a positive balance of $54,000 and change. Now again, I caution you, number one, it's a projection, things change every day, so it's a look as of this point in time.
Not negative, so that's, that's a good thing.
It's not negative, but it's, as I said, it's as of today, and it's a projection, so fingers crossed, you know, we won't be contributing to any deficit at the end of the year, but it remains to be seen how all the results come in. Does anybody have any questions on those two documents?
Just a quick question. When we look at some of the significant percentages used, and they're well beyond 100%, is that, why is that? Is that grants that haven't come through yet? Is that?
Probably the biggest ones that you see at the bottom of the page, like if you see under Tuition to Collaboratives, those are charges that will be made to Circuit Breaker, but what the DOR has said is that we can't charge to an account until the money's been received, and at this point, we do know that DESI has sent three payments, but they're not yet reconciled and posted. The DOR did tell us this week that if we know the money's coming, we can post it, so we'll do a transfer to Circuit Breaker to adjust those. Some of the other ones are just through normal operations, there's expenditures that happen beyond what was originally projected in the budget. I mean, what we like to say about a budget is, a budget is a plan, and plans change. So, we will be doing adjustments to bring these from negative into balance, to the degree that's possible with the other lines. One of the things we've been working on right now is grants, because we'd rather get the grants properly allocated between local and grant funds, because that's kind of a first step before then you address any overages or underages in the local budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not at the moment.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, since the school committee is relatively new, one of the things that we like to do at TMS is we kind of do a school finance 101. It's basically kind of sit down with the school committee and just talk about, you know, the business office, what goes on, what the different accounts are that the school has, we talk about grants, we talk about the local budget, just kind of a primer and an overall overview. So it's something that we offer. So, it's, it's something that we offer and we recommend to the school committee to take up, I mean, either at a school committee meeting, or if you wanna schedule a session that is not a school committee meeting, but just a workshop to hear the overall presentation of what, like I said, we call it school finance 101. We offer that to, to the school committee to schedule at your, at your desire.
That sounds like a plan.
Could I suggest maybe we do do it at a school committee session, so the public can watch and also get a, get our understanding?
It's a good idea.
Is that something that you would bring, you know, information and put it on the projector? Or...
Yep, we can do that, yep.
It's PowerPoint.
I'm gonna eat it.
Yeah, we need to get used to him doing that.
It's on me, it's on me, Madam Chair. Even when you do a workshop, even if it is not during school committee, that is a public meeting. You still have to post it, and public is, is always invited to come.
Okay.
Okay. So, the other piece of information I have for you was the results of the transportation bid that we received yesterday. As I had told you last month, the, there was a, a collaborative that went out to bid, which consists of Gardner, Ash West, Narragansett, and Winchton, which were participants in the last bid. We had gone out to bid, we had done a three-year bid, we had only one bidder, and the results were significantly higher than what we had received. So, the decision was made to go out to bid a second time, extend it to a five-year contract with the hopes that it may attract more bidders or give us more favorable pricing. Unfortunately, what we had was the exact same pricing that we received under the first bid, except now that we, we have two additional years to it. So, what you have in front of you is the bid results from yesterday for Winchton Services. The bid, the sole bidder was First Student, which is our current carrier. And in the information that I sent you earlier today, if I had a chance to look at it, as I told you last time, it is a significant increase over the expiring contract. And there were a couple factors that went into that. The total increase is about 35%. And that is, number one, a function of the increases that the carriers have, have had to take on, because there's new legislation requiring them to provide sick days for school buses. So, what we're hearing is, across the state, there's been an average 16% increase in the contracts just to cover that cost. So, even at no change, you're, you're seeing a 16% increase. In addition to that, compared to the other districts, Winchton got a very favorable rate in the first round of contracts. Now, everybody's pretty much in line for their, their bus prices. So, that has contributed to, to the cost structure as well. One of the other things we've heard, and of course, you don't know what the results are gonna be till you get the bids back, is the, of the five, five companies interested in one bidding, another company said, "I don't know why you're rebidding to five years. I think you're getting a great price." So, take that for what it is, but this is the result of the bids, so we're recommending that you move forward to accept this bid. I don't wanna put pressure on you to necessarily do it today, but we do have to do it within 30 days, and the other towns will also be having meetings with their school committee, committees, the latest of which is the 26th, so that if, if you don't take a vote today, which is fine, you can either have a special meeting, or on the 28th, we'll, we'll be the last school to be accepting the bid, so that they can move forward to issue a contract.
Of May.
Of May.
So, pretty much if we don't accept this bid, we're pretty, we're saying no busing?
That's kinda where we're at now.
What kind of negotiation has gone into the 2.9% annual increase? Any?
2.9% annual increase in...
Year one, year two, year three, four? It's 2.9% each year that it goes up?
That's, that's basically, you put out the bid and you put out the, you know, the specs, and there's not a lot of negotiation. They come back with a price as to what they will, they will offer to charge, and they have a fuel escalation in that, that that's the rate they say that they can provide the service for. It's a sealed bid process.
If, I'm not saying that I'm advocating for a no vote, but if we were to vote no, what happens to the other districts? Is it, does the whole deal go away? What, what, what are the ramifications of...
I believe the way the contracts were at all, all of the districts have to accept. I can confirm that, though.
I'm sorry, I'm asking so many questions.
Ask away, that's how we learn.
Do we know why no other companies bid? No?
No. That's the problem with the bid process. I mean, you can only get the information that you receive back, you know, nobody necessarily comes and calls you up to say why they're not bidding. They either bid or they don't. It's a frustrating process, I grant you.
I think my last question is, I, you know, you, you did send the, the bid specs, and I haven't read through them all. You know, this is based on our district using, if I'm understanding this correctly, 71 buses. No, 11 buses, 11 buses that seat 71 kids. One bus, correct?
Correct.
That seats 48 children, and then three vans that seat however many, I'm not sure.
That's correct. And one of the things that we, we will look into is, we do have within TMS resources for people who have actually worked bus routes before, and actually has worked for First Student. So, we'll do a review of the bus routes and see if there's a possibility that we could consolidate and get to a point where we may be able to eliminate a bus. I mean, it would only come as a result of the analysis. And the way that the contract is structured, it's per bus, and we're not obligated to a number of buses.
That was my question.
So, there is, there is that potential, yep. There is no obligation as to how many buses, it's just an approximation of how many buses are needed. So, there may be some savings there, but it would be based on the analysis. And what we're doing right now is asking central office staff to kind of compile all the data to get people up to their grade, get the kindergarten registration information in, so we can get a new, you know, basically a new set of data for students who'd be taking the bus and then do the bus route analysis.
So, given their figures for the first year, then, we'd have to ask, based on Article 14 in the town meeting warrant, for the in-town transportation, we'd have to add another $4,000 or $5,000 to that figure?
They would have to add, they would have to add to that figure the amount of the contract, yes.
Right. Well, the town would have to approve that amount.
Correct, correct.
I think I saw in here, and I don't remember where it was, so I apologize, but did we not have more buses than the city of Gardner? I'm wondering why that would be.
Because it's a city, there's a lot of students who can walk to schools, so they don't have, as, they only have buses for the more outlying areas.
And I don't think Gardner buses for high school, or did that change?
I don't know. I know at one point they didn't. I don't know if that's still true.
I mean, realistically, do we have a choice?
Not really, 'cause do we wanna make a town decision, but no busing? I, I really don't think that we should take on that, that argument right now.
Do we have an indication of how the other districts are feeling with the quotes they've received?
Yes, from, I've heard from the three other districts, and they're, they're all looking to present to their school committees, recommending approval.
'Cause obviously my train of thought, right, and I know I'm being the devil's advocate and probably not making a lot of allies, but if we all go back and push back, I mean, do they really want, does First Student really wanna give up a contract that could be lucrative for them if we all push back a bit on the rates?
I think, I think what they're thinking is probably, this is the second bid, and they were the only ones bidding, so they don't seem to think that there is any competition there.
We don't have to vote tonight. We can leave it till the last, but do we want to be the last?
Well, I don't care where in order we come in, but...
28th. Like I said, you don't have to vote tonight, but I, I'm just putting it out there that if we go to the 28th, we'll be the last, the last district voting. So, we may be getting some pressure to not be the last man standing. Yeah, I'll be getting pressure.
Do we have, sorry, do we have another meeting scheduled before then? When's our next meeting scheduled?
May 28th.
Well, I guess, unhappily, I would make a motion that we accept the bids for school transportation that's been presented to us tonight.
I would second with an amendment, if we could, that we have whatever resource you said it was, look at the bus routes. Let's see what we can do to, to lower the amount of buses that we need.
Absolutely.
I'd accept that amendment to my motion, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's the last item I had.
I lost my agenda. We had some old business of the legal subcommittee. I have an email from Cindy, unless she would like to come up and speak to it. Come on up to the table, you're gonna miss us.
So, back a few months ago, we had a, we kinda came up with the idea that we would look at the possibility of approaching several other legal firms. So, we sent out an RFP looking for response. We had hoped as a subcommittee, and it was representative, I was on the committee, two school committee members, and myself, kind of looking at that, with the idea of just investigating, maybe looking at a alternative legal firm for the district. And just seeing kind of what was out there, I think, at this point. We've used the same legal firm for a long time, so I think that was the hope. We received only two bids, and the specs for the RFP that we put out was that we wanted to have at least three bids to be able to do a comparison. So, we felt at that time, as a subcommittee, that we would just kinda put things on hold, especially with all of the changes and all as well at this point. Coincidentally, one of the people that did respond is our current legal firm, and again, it's not that we're unhappy with their service, I think we just felt that it was time to go out and do some looking. So, I think everything's kinda put on hold. It might be something you'd wanna consider again in the future, depending on what you think the services, you know, the service is being provided.
And it's also my understanding that we are not under any contract.
Right.
So, we can actually change at any time.
Yeah, we currently, yeah. We currently use the same legal firm for both the school committee or school-based district legal concerns, as well as the special education legal concerns. We use the same legal firm. They, they specialize in that in both areas, really, so they are one of the, I had done a little bit of a survey of the fellow special ed directors in the area, and I couldn't find a special ed department that used a different legal firm than the one that we use, so...
That's good to know.
Speaks to the quality of their work, so...
Sounds like at this point, with, with you leaving and with changes in the school committee, the whole thing needs to be reconstituted anyway.
Right. And this legal firm knows our background, so right now, it's probably just better to leave it alone. And bring it up in the future if needed.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Not I.
Nope. Okay. Then we have a list of field trips.
I have several field trips for you to approve. One, they're all out of state, that's why you have to approve them. There's a field trip to Canaby Lake Park by the Murdoch Middle School coming over.
Good evening. I'm here to represent actually all three grades. We have three field trips coming up in the next month. Two of them need your approval, one does not. So, I'll start with the sixth grade. The sixth grade has proposed a field trip to Canaby Lake Park. The trip is scheduled for June 4th. They have put together a packet that I believe you received. They have correlated the field trip to some of the math and science standards that relate to motion and speed, and they're going to do some observations of the roller coasters and, you know, and, and what? And machines to, you know, to, to do some classwork when they come back. So, they're relating it to their math and to their science class. I do have the paperwork here from them. They, I know in terms of buses, they have, they're using for a student. I have the paperwork for us, for us to pay out of our activity account, and they are, you know, just kinda finalizing their plans at this point, but they do need approval to go out of state. So, I do have the form that they gave me, and I believe you guys do as well.
I'll, I'll give them kudos for creativity, going to an amusement park and tying that into their math and engineering curriculum. That's pretty good.
I, I did, when I was in my former district, we did take our eighth graders there. Canaby Lake, you know, if you're gonna go to an amusement park, it's small enough, it's manageable, it's quiet, it's safe, so, you know, this, this is something they, they were all excited about, so...
Do I have a motion to approve the field trip to Canaby Lake Park?
So moved.
Second. Which one is this, the Camp Dakota?
That's the seventh grade. I'll do that next. Do you have the original?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved and will sign when the form comes around. All right, and you have more?
Yes. Just bringing these up for you to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've seen this at my house.
The second field trip that we need approval for is for our seventh grade. This is for our second annual field trip to YMCA Camp Dakota in Richmond, New Hampshire. This is a, a field trip that we initiated last year with the current eighth graders. Had a phenomenal turnout. This year, we are scheduled to bring 65 students for four days and three nights.
I'm sorry, how many?
How many students?
Yeah.
Sixty-five. We have a number of our staff members that'll be participating as well. We, four of us will be there the entire time, the others will rotate through, so that we have enough coverage back at the school as well, because we all teach seventh and eighth grade. So, for, for this one, we've been fundraising for this one since October. We have, the, the students are all entirely accounted for at this point, you know, so that this has no direct impact on the school budget. This is entirely paid by the students and through our fundraising efforts. So, this is, we're going to be leaving on Monday, and so we would like your approval for this field trip as well.
Now, is, is your, is this Saturday your last can and bottle drive for this?
Yes, this Saturday. I have the flyer right here. We are holding our final bottle and can drive of this school year. We'll be back down on Central Street.
Back at the Rite Aid.
Yeah, by Rite Aid. The, the truck should be dropped off tomorrow. I'm expecting seven or eight students to be down there to help us this time. And the bottle drives is how some of our students that might need a little financial assistance have earned that opportunity. We asked that they volunteer to help us earn some money, and so we've, you know, tried to make it accessible for all the kids.
I'd make a motion, we approve the trip to Camp Dakota.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Off to camp you go.
Okay, the, we skipped two, because Mr. Rogers here came to talk about both. The next one is the field trip to the inn at East Hill Farm for pre-K. Wow, I wanna go to that one. Suzanne Michael is leading the group. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about it, Cindy? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have one more?
Before they do that, I just wanted to give you a quick update on our eighth grade trip as well. We don't need school committee approval for this one, 'cause it is a trip to Boston. But at this point, we have scheduled a day-long trip, extended day trip. We're gonna leave... We're gonna leave the school around eight o'clock in the morning. We have a tour scheduled at the State House. We have various activities for the kids in the afternoon, science museum, aquarium, duck boat tour as well. And then we're gonna, we're gonna finish off the evening with a Red Sox game. Right now, we're at a hundred and thirteen of our eighth graders. We have a hundred and twenty-four kids in the grade, so almost every student is participating. One of our, Mrs. Johnson and one of our history teachers is working on a plan for kind of an in-town activity related to history for the, the small group of students that stays behind, so they'll have something, something different to do it at school if they decide not to participate. But, you know, we're gonna be getting back around eleven o'clock at night. But this field trip also is entirely accounted for and does not directly impact the school budget either. So we wanted to just let you know that we've had a phenomenal turnout on that one as well.
And the ending day activity is the Boston Red Sox.
Oh, right, right, yeah, I mentioned that. So, so we're hoping that when we're at the Red Sox game, you know, to have some signs and we're hoping to get on TV a little bit.
What day was that?
It is against Toronto, I believe. It's, it's on Friday, the, June 12th.
Now, the last time I talked to Cal, I think it was, he mentioned that they were still looking for a couple of chaperones at that time. Have they, have those spots all been filled?
I, I think we're still looking for one or two more.
Yeah, have any idea?
With the, with the added number of students. From when our original deadline was, we've added another ten students. You know, we've tried to be very inclusive on this, on this particular field trip.
But we have bought a block of tickets and at this time, there's approximately twelve tickets still in play, so. Anyway, the reason I've come up is I want you to know that of the three field trips for the end of the year, we're trying to create seminal events. So Camp Dakota has become now a repeat event for the seventh grade and hopefully that will become what you do in the seventh grade every year. And we've got more kids going. Those who don't go but stay back, we've created outside activities based around science and using the campus of Murdoch Middle School for investigations and so forth. So the teachers who are back use the sciences and they'll be outdoors, so you'll get the benefit of being outdoors at the same time. We do realize that some of our kiddos have never gone away and stayed overnight and so that's a thing we're overcoming. And each year, we've gotten a little better at it. Next year, we know that we will be negotiating kids who can come for the day and go home at say four o'clock. As long as mom and dad can get them there on time, then that will expand the number of kids participating during the day. Literally, literally, our students have fundraised everything, soup to nuts, nothing is coming out of the school budget. Scott and Mr. Miller and all of the student council, everything, literally, they've, they've made, they've gone after thousands and thousands of dollars and I would say somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-three thousand has come and gone for the major events. So our kids are, A, very good at fundraising, B, enthusiastic, and C, they're seeing the net gain for this, for the future. So, you know, as this continues to evolve, they are in great support of making this work and Mr. Miller, Mr. Rogers and members of the faculty have worked diligently to keep this going and our kids are to be commended because they've done a wonderful job.
Absolutely, that's great.
Excellent, thank you.
And then as I finish up here, I would like to extend an invitation to the members of the school committee and to Dr. Kelthaway as well. On next Wednesday, the 20th, we're going to be having a cookout at Camp Dakota at six o'clock and we would like to extend an invitation for members of the board if you are so, so interested to come and join us for hot dogs and hamburgers. If you could just email me, you know, srogers@winchuninktwelve.org if you're interested so I can get a final count to the camp. You know, we'd just like to extend that invitation.
And at this time, we have approximately a hundred parents coming to that cookout.
What time is that?
It's at six PM on Wednesday and we've invited the parents to come early so they can, you know, visit with their kids and see the facilities and, you know, get to see what we, what we're working on up, up at camp, so.
So it's like an open house tour?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the next one on your list is a pre-K trip to the inn at East Hill Farm. Cindy?
So this is an annual trip that the preschool does. We bring our four-year-olds off on, on a field trip. It's kind of their first time out on a big school bus. They ride a yellow school bus. That's the best part of the trip for them. They love the yellow school bus. It's a great little inn. It's a small, it's right in Troy, New Hampshire, so it's just the right distance. It's, you know, not twenty-five minutes up the road from us, just on the way to Keene. And they cater really to young students and they really have designed a nice learning experience. This time of year when we go, there's lots of farm animals and lots of baby farm animals. It's very hands-on. They have a little lunch that they have that we do at, at the farm as well and then the kids come back. So it's a, a day-long trip, but a little bit of shorter and just the right, just the right caliber for a, a small group of four-year-olds, so it's a great, it's a great experience for them.
Where, where is this Cindy?
It's right in Troy, New Hampshire.
Oh, okay.
If you're heading right up on Route 12, it's right off of Route 12.
It's a fabulous trip. I've been on it as a parent chaperone and as a paraprofessional. It's really fun.
It's just right. It's perfect for our group, you know, for our age group. We used to go off to Sterling to another plate, another farm-type setting and it was just a bit of a longer ride and a little bit busier. When you get there, it's really, it's just our little place. It's just our kids are the only group that's there and it's really, they cater to us very nicely.
Excellent, and it looks like you have plenty of chaperones on the list.
Lots of chaperones with little guys.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go on to the firm.
The next two I'm presenting together, it's two field trips from Toy Town. And Catherine, do you wanna present?
Another farm trip. This is for the bigger kids. We do it in two, we have two groups that go to classes together because they do centers there and they, they rotate through them, so they have people that take them through the different areas. They learn to grow vegetables. And I know next year, our cafeteria staff is looking at doing something like that on our campus, so it would be a good experience for our little ones, especially since they'll be the bigger kids next year. So they do this, they've done it ever since I've been at Toy Town. I'm not sure how long they've always done it. Of course, this is one of those dear-to-my-heart areas. My son was married there.
It's also really neat. I remember driving in and seeing people up on the hills painting. You know, they, they let artists go in and just paint.
Up behind the barns up there too. Of course, the roads right now are not very good. Very bumpy.
What, what grade is this that's going?
Third grade.
Third grade, okay.
It's just they send two classes one day and two classes the next.
All right. I'd make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Off to your farm. I think, is that it for?
Four field trips, that's it.
Yep.
At this point, Madam Chair, if you would allow me, I would like to call Cindy back and definitely putting you to work here. And Cindy's gonna explain to you a little bit about the CPR, which is a review by the state that we just had. Please.
So I wanted to give you a quick overview of our coordinated program review. It's a review that happens every six years. The Department of DESE comes in. They review, they, they come in to take a look at both our special education programs, our civil rights compliance and our ELL programming, our English language learner programming. So there's several parts to the process. They came in back in March. Well, let me stop further back. Last year, right around this time, I did a significant upload of documentation. There are many, many, many criteria to follow, both for special education compliance and for civil rights compliance and even for ELL compliance as well. There's a good sixty-five areas in special ed and another forty-five areas in civil rights and then probably about twenty-five areas that they look at very closely for ELL. So last year about this time, I did a significant upload of our documentation gathered up through, both from my office, from the schools, from central office, reporting out on what we do, how we comply, giving them that documentation. In March, they came and did a review. In March, they came and did a review of the special education files, again, looking for those compliance pieces, making sure that we're following all of the legal requirements for special education. And then a week, two weeks ago, just after April vacation, they came and did interviews in the district where they interviewed a fair number of people, staff from every building, other administrators. They did tours of each of the building. They look for our accessibility, they look for our compliance, they look to make sure that our programming is appropriately placed in the building. They look for class sizes, they make sure that our age ratios are right and really look at every little nook and cranny of special education and education in general, what we're offering. So they were here with us, I know, I'm not sure if it's this mic or a different one. So I'm not sure, they came and really spent a good whole week with us doing the interviews. They did an exit interview with both myself and Dr. Kafawi and he can speak to the exit interview as well. What will come out of the, out of this visit will be a report on our compliance and I did ask with my leaving the district if they would try to get that report to us before the end of the school year. I'm not sure if they will or not. What I'd like to be able to do is go through the report and make sure that I can help with the corrective action plan. Any area that they cite us on, we need to create an action plan on. You know, years ago, we had a number of sightings. The last time they came, we had very few sightings. My impression from their visit this time is that we will get through the coordinated program review very well. Both the gentlemen that came and did the interviews and then conducted the exit interview were very, very positive. They spoke so highly about our staff, about just the, the care that people have around our students, how they're very, how our special education students are very involved and treated as parts of the school. You know, they were quite impressed with the, the ability that the staff has even despite some of our physical, you know, fiscal constraints, to really still care about the kids and they were very impressed with that. They were impressed with our facilities despite the fact that our buildings are a little bit older or some of them are a little bit older, they're still in very good repair and that we've done a good job to keep in compliance that way. And again, they, they felt that the ELL files and the special ed files were very, very document safe, so really sound in what we do. So I'll try to get that report. When it does come, we will present it again so that you know what the findings were and we'll have an opportunity to work around that. I will say, I know a couple of things that they're going to look at and Dawn, you'll, you'll relate to this, being part of that policy subcommittee. There'll be a couple policies that they'll want us to look at. One thing we wanna do is there's been a new protected group that's been added to our groups of protected, so we wanna make sure that we add, you know, gender identity to that, to that labeling with our, with our protected groups, so that's something that a number of our policies are gonna need that updated. It'll be a quick clerical kind of update, but we'll still need to run through the whole process of being an approved policy. So I'll pull together the list of the policies that that entails so that you have that and, you know, we'll have that kind of just ready. And I don't know if Dr. Kafawi wants to speak to anything, but both gentlemen were very impressed with what they saw.
I did have an exit interview with them and two things he mentioned to, to me particularly, he was very pleased, but two things that were very neat, I think deserved to be highlighted. This is a gentleman that has been doing this for over twenty years or something like that and he said that this is by far one of the best record-keeping in SPECT and civil rights that he has ever seen in any district. He was very pleased with that. And the other part that he was very pleased with, that he wanted to mention and highlight, was how well we were able to keep throughout the district because he went out and visited the schools, had interaction with the principals and how well we were able to keep up with the services of SPECT given the, the, the level of cuts that we had to take. And he was very impressed with that and he, he wanted to make mention of that in his report.
I'm very proud of all the staff and the hard work that they do and, you know, it's nice to be recognized too. I think sometimes you don't have that opportunity, so it was great to be recognized for what we're doing and how hard people work and he said to me, again, the, the chair of the group said when he left that, he, he said, "I do these all year long" and he said, "This is, this is the best coordinated program review I've been to all year," is what he said. So that speaks to what we're doing, so I was really proud of that.
He did mention, he said, "You have a great middle school principal." I said, "You sure you don't mean the assistant?"
Yeah, I think he did.
No, he said, "A great middle school principal."
Thank you. Very happy news.
Thanks Cindy.
And I do have a, do you all have a copy of the calendar?
No.
You don't?
We didn't. No, you didn't send it to us.
We would have gotten a copy. It's a little departure from last year because we kinda went back to what it was before in terms of the school vacation in the winter because the New Year's is falling too far. And I'm gonna ask again Cindy because she was part of the school committee, about the calendar committee and there were also, Mr. Barbara was representing the school committee, but he's not here today.
So we met as a committee with representation from the school committee as well. We started at that level. We, we took a look at last year's calendar, we looked, took a look at how this year's calendar would play out. We looked at a variety of options. We looked at a number of things with, with so many snow days in other districts, the Commissioner of Education has sent us a couple different versions of things that districts might wanna consider. We entertained the idea of some districts are moving towards a March vacation time. We, we talked about that, we, some of our concerns around that March, you know, not having a April and February doing just a March vacation. Some of our concerns around that is March is one of our busiest, you can ask the building principals, one of our busiest testing months, both with Park and MCAS. We felt that might be difficult. With that, we looked at, you know, kind of up-fronting our PD time. You'll see in the calendar that we have, our PD days are towards the front, towards the front of the school year. We've left a PD day later in the school year that if you had a year where you ended up with loads of snow days, you might wanna look at adjusting that. We've done that in the past. We'd like to use a couple of the days, the beginning of the school year to do professional development with the staff, yet we wanna get the kids back in swing to that last week in August. So that committee went through, looked at the calendar. The calendar then moves through a process where the building principals look through it. We did that at an administrative meeting with Dr. Kafawi involved as well. We've run the calendar by the Teachers Association just to make sure that they feel it fits the, any requirements within their contract so that we're not doing any problems there. And the calendar that you have there is the draft of what the committee feels is the best approach for this coming school year.
Are there, are there days in this one where, I remember this current year was the first time I had ever encountered some of the half-days maybe were different for middle school than they were for the elementary schools? Is that?
Yeah, it, it is affected that way again. What we've found is that our, our elementary schools have gone to a trimester, so we wanna make our parent-teacher conferences match with the trimester dates so that the information we're sharing is tied in with the time of year that the grading happens and the middle high school is more on a traditional schedule, so their parent-teacher conferences are different. So it doesn't mean that all the students have those same half-days. What happens is there are days when it's parent-teacher conferences at, at Memorial and Toy Town, the high school kids spend a whole day in school and then vice versa when it's the high school's time, the elementary schools spend a whole day in school. So no, they have the same amount of school days, it just is balanced out that way.
See any dates that you don't like?
Nothing jumps out at.
Do we have a motion to accept the calendar as brought forward?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Calendar is accepted?
Thank you.
Could you send us a copy?
Though not shared.
I don't know why she didn't put it in the package. It was supposed to be in your package. Okay, apologize for that. I will talk to her tomorrow. And the last item that we need a vote from you is on the school choice. That's a yearly vote that you have to take, whether you accept to allow students from other communities to join our schools or not. Do we need a new vote from you? From our point, we do have capacity in all grades. At this point, we don't feel that there is any need to restrict any particular grade. I thought I was.
I thought I was. I thought I was. I said, what we need is a school vote, from the yearly vote, for accepting students to come from other community and do the school choice, and we are not recommending any restriction on any grade.
I don't believe there is, but would there be any reason we would not want to accept them in?
Usually, the typical reasons is space. If you're out of space, obviously, you don't want to accept more than you can handle. If it's gonna push your class size up, at this point, we welcome them to come from other areas.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have, how many students do we have now from out of town? About? Do you have any, just a rough figure?
I don't have the exact number with me, but I'd be happy to.
I'm sorry?
I do not have the exact number with me right now, but I'd be happy to give it to you tomorrow.
All right, just to be curious.
I have a forty-eight.
Not that much. I mean, we have the out.
Yeah.
Is out to, the ratio of out to in is so much higher.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about it.
All right, I would make a motion that we approve.
Second.
School choice.
Sorry.
That's right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And I know the other members weren't here, but I would like to get these minutes released. You all got copies. I read them, matched them to my notes. So if we could just, if you would please acknowledge that we can release these. It was a public hearing of budget and restructuring of Thursday, March nineteenth. Could I get a motion to?
To approve.
To approve and release?
So moved.
What they did at the select board is they can approve the form of it, but not the content. You can approve the content because you were there.
Okay.
Those, the other two can approve the form of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So can I?
I move to accept the minutes in form.
Content, did you say?
No, only Dawn can approve content.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'm so confused on the exact question.
A motion to approve the minutes in form by members, content by Chair.
That works for me.
Second.
All those in favor for Thursday, March nineteenth?
The public hearing, correct?
Yes, the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we have the same motion for the regular school committee of March nineteenth.
Go ahead, Danielle, you got the wording down.
So moved.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, the same motion for the regular school committee meeting of Thursday, April second.
So moved.
Second.
You got that switch in, a moves in.
Oh, we shouldn't do that, should we?
Yes, I did.
Then we have regular school committee meeting of April seventh.
You know what? Can I back up for a minute? I assume you've gone through the content and you've determined if there's any need to hold these?
Yes, I did.
So moved.
Second.
I was making sure Dawn had gone through to make sure there was no reason to hold these within the content.
No reason to hold.
No. I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the last one is the regular school committee meeting of April sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will get those signed and posted. Questions and comments by members.
I have some. Some, one, where are my thoughts? So the Charting the Course session that's offered by MASC, the Mass Association of Supercommittees, I plan on signing up for the September twelfth session. It's an eight-hour training session. The registration isn't open yet on the website, but I'm putting it out there that that's the date I'm attending, if you guys have any interest in attending on the same time. I was going to do the June thirteenth, 'cause I'd rather get it done sooner, but then I remembered after I signed up that we have a session.
Yeah, we're having a governance workshop on June thirteenth. Okay. All right, so you're gonna plan on going September twelfth?
Yep.
I'll see if that works for me, too.
Yeah, sure. And we'll include the other two new members. Will also have to take this course. It's not a rush issue. What is it usually, within?
Within a year, but I feel like it would be better to.
Sooner the better.
Faster.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be beneficial?
Anything else?
Madam Chair, would you send us exactly the names, or maybe the individual members can send us when they want to go, so we can register you?
Sure.
The registration's right on the website.
You can do it yourself?
Yes. After you register as a member, which was in the new member email, you go in and you do your whole username, password, and then, yep.
Great.
Okay, so each member can register on your own?
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
I guess maybe a future agenda item, and I've read through a lot of our policies, but I haven't got through all of them yet. Communication, and, you know, I do realize we've been putting minutes on the school website, but just a broad conversation about how we would like to communicate with the public going forward, if there's any policies that we should consider updating or revising. I think we all know that that's one of my big, big things.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you. No, I guess that would go down to number twelve, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Greg, did you have anything?
Not really any comments, but since we're talking about potential policy changes, I know we're gonna be doing the reorganization after the two new members have been brought on board, but I'd like to see a policy in our bylaws that if anybody wants to bring up a reorganization in the school committee mid-year or at any other time, that they can bring it up, but the vote has to be delayed until the next school committee meeting, that they can't make the motion on one night and the vote be taken the same night.
I, may I find me, Madam Chair? I think is that the kind of consideration that I think would be very, very smart to talk to MASC and their legal.
To talk to what?
To MASC, Mass Association of School Committee, and their legal department, they'll be able to help, to provide you with language for such policies. They're very good at it.
That's fine. Other than that, I don't have anything at the moment.
Are you good with voting at the same meeting with the two new members?
Oh, I'm talking, yeah, I mean, going forward with.
No, just making sure.
Yeah, of course, yes. Hopefully, we'll have them on sooner than later.
All right, and just so, there has been another vacancy posting on the town website, and letters will be accepted until June first. We plan on having a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment on June eighth to appoint two seats to the committee. Other than that, I guess we'll see you at town meeting.
Um.
Yep, any more?
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Before that, Mr. Vines, we just got your numbers. The school choice in is thirty-six as of December. They haven't updated the numbers yet, and the school choice out is one thirty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How many of those are the academy? Do we know?
Yeah, we can. How many do we have in the academy from choice ten?
Two.
Two.